I sent Amir to go eat pizza.
Okay, alright. Alright, it is 6:01 and it is time for us to convene the Temple City Unified School District Regular Meeting of the Board of Education and call that to order. Let's start with roll call. I am here. Member Giorgino?
Here.
Member Sneed?
Here.
Member Smith?
Here.
Member Bell?
Here.
And I believe Member King is here. Student Board Member King is here, but he's enjoying some pizza and we will let him do that. Moving on to item number three, public comment on closed session agenda items. Any public comment? Alright, going on to item number four, which is disclosure of items to be discussed in closed session. We have three items. Personnel matters under Government Code 54957, public employee appointment, discipline dismissal release. We have item two, which is conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, one case. And item three, which is labor negotiations under Government Code 54957.6. Update, direction to district negotiators Arkuna, Connie Wu, and Tamara Katarion for TCEA, CSCA 105 and CSCA 823 and management. May I get a motion to adjourn to closed?
So move.
Motion by Member Bell, second by Member Giorgino. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero and we are in closed session at 6:02. Oh my gosh, wait.
May I get a motion to reconvene to open?
So moved.
Motion by member Smith, all second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item number seven, announcements, tonight's meeting is being digitally recorded. And next, we will go to item eight, which is Pledge of Allegiance led by Sarah Tsai from Cloverly Elementary School. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Temple City Board of Education, staff, students, parents, and guests. My name is Sarah Tsai, and I'm a sixth grader at Cloverly. Please stand and join me with a pledge of allegiance. Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag with the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you so much. All right. We move on to announcements of actions taken in closed session. There were no actions taken in closed session. Item ten is changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Oh, no. I thought we did. Oh, we revised it. No, we do not.
All right. Okay. All right. Our superintendent says we are good to go. So let's go ahead and move on to approval of the agenda. May I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda? Motion by members Sneed, second by member Georgino. Preferential vote from student board member King.
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. That takes us to our favorite time of our meeting, which is the special recognition presentation. And we will start with Cloverly Elementary Dance Club.
Hello, my name is Emma Madrigal. Hello, my name is Emma Madrigal, and I'm a fifth grader at Cloverly. Our new dance club began at September 21st. So far, we have performed at our school's October Spirit Rally and during our Halloween Parade. As we grow and learn, we will have five performing subgroups within our total membership. Our subgroups will continue to be Palms and will soon add lyrical, hip-hop, and two novelty groups. Now, I'd like to reintroduce Sarah.
Thank you, Emma. Hello again. Right now, we will show a video with clips of our practices, first two performance, and a sneak peek of our upcoming holiday performance. Please check our website as we will be performing as upcoming Cloverly events throughout the year.
But before we hit the clips, we're going to have little Victoria Hernandez speak.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Hernandez, and I'm a fourth grader at Cloverly. Our dance club meets every Wednesday after school, and we currently have 103 members. I'm also a member of the Palm team.
Awesome. Thank you.
And before we hit the clip, I just first wanted to start off by saying welcome back, Dr. Kuna and Amir King, former Cloverly student, awesome, incredible student. Very proud of you, Amir. And thank you to the board. So a huge perk of being a principal at Cloverly is how we balance academic rigor, but also character development, social-emotional learning, and fun. And this year, this club is new. This club is new to our school, not my idea. All I had to do was say yes, and it was very easy. However, I was a little stressed because when Kelly Morrison, our new site lead secretary, and Wendy Madrigal, our awesome EL coordinator, came to me and showed me the design and we're going to start an after-school dance club, I said, are you going to have tryouts? Are you going to limit the students? And they said, no, we're just going to see how many show up. We have 103 students, and it is so well organized. I just showed the clip to my wife and my daughter. And my wife, as all my friends call me, they all call me Edo, and she said, Edo, this is incredible. This is magnificent. And not only are the kids having fun, they're exercising, can I join too? I don't know if she could leave the hospital that she works at, at one o'clock on Wednesdays, but if she can, by all means, she can come down. But this, this is why I'm a principal, to see my students having fun. I've got awesome classified staff stepping up to take on what I thought was a very daunting task. And you will see now how well-controlled the students are and how much fun they're having. So thank you for your time. But again, all I had to do was say yes, my staff is awesome, and they've done everything to help us. And Ms. Sam Cat, I call her my tech girl. I get confused on what the exact title is, Instructional Resource Specialist, and it, it changes on and on. But she also helped put the clip together. She posts things on our website. And if you come to the Cloverly office, now we have a TV inside the office that's constantly running different activities that are taking place. So that is my Sam Cat. And again, Kelly Morrison, my office manager in charge of the dance club, and Ms. Madrigal, my EL coordinator assisting as well. So let's watch the video. It's called lag, right? You'll notice we have boys and girls.
Yes.
In our program. And we started late September when our students performed all 103 for our Halloween Parade. They only had three practices prior to that.
Wow.
Huge accomplishment for my lovely ladies here to my left. You might be tortured by the Board of Education. Do you have any questions for the lovely ladies?
Board members, anybody?
I do. Yes.
Well, I just wanted to say if your group is interested in performing at the Camellia Festival, I'm in charge of the entertainment, so please contact me, and I can work you into the schedule. I'd love to have you.
Thank you.
I do have a question. What is your favorite part of being a part of this group?
Seeing your friends and trying something new.
All right.
I like the spirit it provides for the school.
I love how it brings everybody together and we just have a fun time together.
Awesome, awesome. I want to say, when I was watching it, I just said... I want to say, when I was watching it, I just said, the Performing Arts has got a bright future. And, you know, our program continues to thrive, and it's going to thrive even more. If you guys are starting at, you know, such a young age, by the time you get to the high school, we are, our future looks super bright. So thank you so much. I also wanted to ask, is there funding for, I saw they had pom-poms, they look very, you know, coordinated. Is there funding, or how did that work?
So I actually borrowed them, because I also coach at Oak, and so all those pom-poms were borrowed from my auxiliary team.
Okay.
So they were on loan, and then Ms. Madrigal and I have actually purchased a few for the school. But no, we haven't actually asked for any donations from the kids yet. It's been for free.
Oh, wow.
We do hope to, just so we can get them like a shirt and different things.
Yes.
Yeah. And then we did apply for the school's foundation, which we got approved for, to get at least 42 sets of pom-poms. So it gets us almost there. Not fine, but yes.
Well, I know, I mean, that's something we can, there's, we are supportive of Performing Arts, and hopefully, there's a way we can figure out something there. I don't know. I'll leave that to the superintendent.
Yeah, we do think Oak, the sharing is caring.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. It's just a village, you know, supporting each other, so.
Have any of you ever taken dance classes before? There's.
Yeah.
Well, we have some goodies for you. I want to make sure the presentation is over, because I tend to like, okay, all right, good, okay. Well, we do have some goodies, so we want to do that, and we want to take some pictures. So let's go ahead and, yeah. Why don't we do this? Yeah, and then I'll take these. And we'll come around and give you your certificates, and then take a picture. All right, so we have Victoria Hernandez. Here you go. All right, why don't you go right over there? And then we have Sarah Tsai. Here you go. And Emma Madrigal.
And holding imaginary certificates, I'd like to call forward Kelly Morrison and Wendy Madrigal, please. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the pleasure of having Mr. Kevin Irish here. Well, what we wanted to do was show the work that you have done to beautify our school, and have you come up, talk about it if you would like, and then we'll, yeah. We will, we have a small gift of our appreciation for you. So please come on up to the podium.
Thank you.
All right, I know we have some photographs, right, to share?
Did send them to Anthony. That's Longden Elementary. I did that in the summertime.
Do you do this on your, by yourself, or you have help?
I do signs as a hobby. I'm a pinstripers by trade, but I do signs as a hobby.
Okay.
So I did these, I just finished these last weekend. Sean O'Leary helped me put them up. I did the football scoreboard the last weekend in September, and finished that, actually got it done in two weekends. Sean also helped me a little bit with that. And then you can see the before and after kind of pictures. The baseball, oh, we haven't got the baseball yet. There's the baseball. I did the baseball, most of signs in baseball in 2017, and then we did the scoreboard just before school got, school ended. There's a scoreboard there. We just repainted it, new lettering, at the end of the school year, this past school year. So I just do signs as a hobby. I played baseball at Temple City, and I still live here, so I know the coaches, Rob and Sean and Kevin. And I just, we did, I said, we did most of signs in 2017, and then the scoreboard, we just did this past school year. So I, this past school year, I only went to one baseball game, and I had told Rob, Nelson, the baseball coach, first I asked Sean, hey, do you think he'll let me do, redo the scoreboard? And he's like, yeah, go ahead, go have him, go ask him. So I went to one of the practices, and he said, he said, yeah, go get it done. And I said, who do we need to talk to? He said, just get it done, and we'll apologize later. I said, okay. So we, we got it done. Sean, Sean O'Leary helped me with that one, too. We got it done in literally one week, and so, and I want to give a shout out to Arcadia Sign Company. He designed all the layouts, he cut all the lettering for me, he cut all the signs, and so he's, he gets a lot of credit, too.
Wow.
But I just do them as a hobby.
This is, this is such a gift.
I'm glad I can give back. Glad I can afford to give back. That's what it's all about.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you for having me.
Thanks, Anthony, too. Thank you.
Yes. Did board members want to comment?
I will.
And yes, that was me up on the ladder.
No, I just want to thank Kevin for beautifying our school.
Thank you.
When I first saw the signs, I thought, hmm, how come they only did some and not the others? And then I found out it was you that was volunteering to do it for us, and it's just such a gift. I really appreciate it.
Right, well, the ones that face Temple City Boulevard, the Boulevard that says Bob, Hitchcock Stadium, and the two Saff Champion ones, the two, the first two, we put up a week ago, and then the one in the middle was green with yellow vinyl, but I got the wrong color yellow, and I didn't want to put the wrong color yellow, so we waited a week, and then we got the right color yellow, and then Sean helped me put it up on Sunday.
Wow.
Well, we need more alums like you. Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, I was shown the picture of the football scoreboard, and I was like, oh, who did that? And I was told it was you, and I thought, oh, wow, this is incredible, just as a volunteer doing that.
No, thank you. Two weekends, we got it done in two weekends, so it was, it went, and it was like, the first weekend I did it was the end of September, and it was like 100 degrees, so we started, I started at 6:30 in the morning, and by the time the sun got to about here, I stopped, which was about noon, but two weekends, so it went pretty quick.
Wow.
So.
It's amazing.
Like I said, until you see it before and after, you don't realize how faded out it was, until you see it, until you see it now, but it's a big, yeah, it'll last for a long time.
Definitely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have some, we have some goodies for you here. This one is a certificate of appreciation for Kevin Irish. Here you go, and a little gift.
Nice.
And we'd like all the helpers to come up with you, and we take a picture, but let me come around.
He helped me quite a bit. He's the current varsity baseball pitching coach.
Thank you so much.
And alumni.
Yeah, and alumni, that's right, and alumni, too.
Didn't you do the snack bar also?
Well, no, Anthony, Anthony painted the snack bar. I just did the scoreboard and the one.
Anthony's an H.
Anthony, Anthony, come on up, Anthony, come on up.
Oh, because I'm the shortest?
Come on, sit right next to him.
Did you guys go to school with Anthony?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm old now.
Yeah, you look good.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Glad you made it look, look new again.
All right. That was great. Thank you so much. Have a good night. All right, so we move on to item number 13, public comment on agendized and non-agendized items. Do we have any public comment? All right, we go on to community updates. I have a couple. One is Veterans Day Celebration on Friday, this Friday, at Temple City Park. The ceremony begins at 10:30. I've attended this in the past. It's a beautiful ceremony and a great tribute to our servicemen and women, and if you can make it out, please do. It'll be worth your time and a great way to honor our service folks. Also, Saturday, November 19th, at 5:00 PM, there's, the Historical Society is holding a Hometown Harvest Dinner fundraiser, and it's at the Historical Society, right? There wasn't any information about cost or anything? I don't know if there's, if there's information about that yet.
It's $40.
It's $40, okay.
And there's reservation forms in the back.
Reservation forms are in the back.
Or on the website.
Yes. And have I seen, is the actual advertisement on Facebook or anything like that?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, right? I think I did see it from, on the Historical Society. All right, so hopefully, you can join them, and, you know, they can raise money for a good cause for our city, in our Historical Society. All right, that is it for item 14. Now we move on to district updates, starting with Connie Wu.
Good evening, Board President Espinoza, Board of Education, and Dr. Kuna, if this is your first Board meeting, and my fellow camera members and the community, welcome. We're so excited for you to be here. We had a hurricane in the past two days, and it did test our facilities. So fortunately, there's no major leaking, but we do have, we do find that there's a water drainage issue at the different school side. So our custodian and facility staff, they work very hard to make sure that it won't not impact our instruction and safety of our students. So thank both of them for their hard work, and as well as all school side, principal and staff, so make sure that they will not impact our daily operation. So finally, High School Media Center HVC had to be replaced.
Yay!
So we are making it on the day for the PD, so challenges on, and thank Anthony for his team and the hard work. We're continuing to secure the new units from supplies. We have the shortage, just a supply chain issues, so we're already seeking the additional units, and we will strategically replace the aging units at the school side. So state contacted me yesterday, and they request additional information regarding our Universal TK and the Kinder Facility grant application. So I'm working closely with our district consultant and the state, make sure that all the questions are answered. So Dr. Kuna, Anthony, and I, we did the facility work at the Oak, DDLC, and Temple City High School, per Dr. Kuna's instruction, and we will schedule weekly and school side facility visit, and he will guiding us to finish the facility master plan. So that is our, my update.
Thank you so much, Connie. And thank you, and we appreciate the work done on the HVAC. It's great news for your team and Anthony. Thank you. All right, next we have Richard Lomen, Education Services.
Good evening, everybody. I'll go chronologically. So I guess I want to start off with Halloween. I don't know if any of you made it to any of the sites. The preschool, it was the cutest thing ever. So if you guys have not made it to the preschool yet, you need to go to the preschool, you need to see the little kiddos, but little kiddos in costume, like, I don't know how I came back to work that day. Like, it's so cute, and they did their little parade. The great part about it was, the next day, so November 1st, I stopped by Starbucks, the barista's like, hey, I know you. I was like, from where? He's like, you work for TC USC. I was like, I do. He's like, I was at, my daughter is at the preschool, thank you for what you do. And so that thank you is really for, for all of us, including Mickey and her team, and Anthony for the work he did on it. But it felt good. I wasn't in Temple City yet, I was still in Rosemead, but for someone to recognize us, and us, I mean me, but recognize us at a Starbucks and just say, thank you for what you do. So it was really nice. I want to thank ed service team, site administrators, the HR team, for putting on a great PD, planning and putting on a great PD. I want to thank the teachers and the certificated staff for being part of that PD on November 1st. It's always nice to build upon the strengths of our kids and have the PD that attaches to that. And then finally, Art and I last week had the opportunity to go to the park that's behind the 99 Cent store. Do you remember the name of the park?
Primrose.
Primrose Park, that is correct. So, yeah. So our virtual academy teachers who teach virtually, and all their kids are virtually, and they have virtual friends, and they have virtual class and all that, actually had the opportunity to meet in person in the real world. And so Art and I went, and we saw the secondary students, so there's like 15 students there, interacting with Ms. Paulina and Ms. Finley, and then Mr. Westgate showed up, and they had done the younger secondary, so seventh and eighth grade, earlier in the day, and then the elementary kids earlier than that. And so it's nice to see our kids who are virtually still getting that, that social connection in the real world. So a special thanks to the virtual academy teachers for doing that for our kids.
Excellent. All right, Human Resources. Tamara?
All right. Good evening, Board President. I want to start off with a huge shout-out to all three of our unions. So that was super fun. Thank you for welcoming our superintendent with open arms. Thank you, not only for the burritos, but for the hugs, for the high fives, for the camaraderie, for the family. This is what we're all about, and this has been such a good feeling, like, to go from there to now, we have alum giving back, like, this is who we are. And I've heard several people talk about why we're so different, and these are the things that we get to look at and say, because we're one, like, we're family. And so thank you for that. Thank you for bringing us together. I really appreciate that. And then we, both, Dr. Kuna and I, had the opportunity to attend the CTA luncheon, so Shelley and Elias, thank you so much. That was fun today. And really, it's about our partnership. So that was a demonstration of us saying, we're a part of you, you're a part of us, because we're all one. And what a great way to kick off negotiations. So we're really excited, and I'm so proud to be a part of this place. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to item number 16, which is Bargaining Unit Comments. TCEA, Shelley? Annie, Elias. All right.
Thought I was on top of it tonight, turning it on. Okay. Good evening. I just, well, we just wanted to come up here and officially welcome Dr. Kuna. We've said it, but this is the first meeting that he's officially part of, so that, and then Dr. K kind of stole what I was going to talk about also, which is Elias and I have been talking today about just how, like, uplifted and like mentally, I don't know, just refreshed, we feel today. We were at the CTA, it was a president's meeting that was all day out in Pomona, and then the superintendents and whoever we invited was invited for lunch from 11 to 1:00. And so Dr. Kuna and Dr. K came, and it was, it was fun, and it was, like Dr. K said, the camaraderie and the partnership, and then tonight, on top of that, just the feeling out there, and just the support that I think we all feel for, for Dr. Kuna, and the relief that so many of us feel to have you here and have you back with us. We're just really excited and really looking forward to negotiations, and just a really happy feeling right now, so thank you.
Don't mess it up.
All right. With that, we will move on to CSCA 105, Tessie.
I didn't bring my thesaurus, but basically, what everyone has said. Welcome, Art. Thank you for being here. We're looking forward to negotiations. I was thrilled to pull up and see everyone out in the parking lot and just visiting, and I think, I think Shelley said it best, it's a I think, I think Shelley said it best, it's a feeling of relief and hope, and we're looking forward to it. So, uh, thank you, and that's really it.
All right. Thank you, Tessie.
Thank you.
All right, next we have CSCA 823, Art.
Hey, do it again. Welcome, Art. It was good talking to you this afternoon.
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, sorry.
Like I said, talking to you this afternoon was great, and I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of conversations in the future. It was good to have you back. It seemed like it was been a while, but, oh, was it four years? Yeah, seemed longer. Glad you're back. Now we can get this game started again and, and get back on track where we need to be. I did address the board last year during the school year about having, we have good people here, we don't want to lose them. Fortunately, we lost one. One of my members went to another district because that district paid more. That's what I, what my fear was, losing somebody and us losing a good employee and someone else gaining that person. That person has been here 15 years, a lot of service that that person put into this district. So with that said, we're going into the bargaining table on Monday. Hopefully it's gonna be a good session, but I do ask the district to really think about what I said about losing people. We are gonna bargain hard this round, and I'm sure it's gonna be fun, but, you know, we do need to compensate the people that keep this thing going, what they're worth. A district cannot run without classified employees, and that's, that's not a no-brainer. You know, if you didn't have us, we wouldn't have a school, we wouldn't have a safe environment for our students, we wouldn't have a clean and sanitized environment for our students. You know, we wouldn't have buildings that were maintained properly. And Anthony knows, he comes from one of us, and we do put a lot into this, and we do take a lot of pride in what we do. So again, I ask, please consider compensating us for what we're worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Now we move on to Item 17, Board Member Comments, and tonight we are starting with Members' Need.
Thank you, President Espinoza. It was nice to see so many community members last week as we welcomed Dr. Kuna back. I really enjoyed meeting with our ASB students tonight. They are, they're just such an outstanding group of, not just young leaders, just, they're just wonderful leaders, and like I told them, they're the, our students are the best in the world, and they're like the cream of the crop, leading the way at the high school. I want to thank the Cloverly Dance Club, looks like a lot of fun, wonder if they take adult people to join them, get some exercise there. I attended the Committee on Aging and the Temple City Ed Foundation meetings, and at the Ed Foundation meeting, they did award several grants to teachers and groups throughout the district, and they're very, very supportive of everything that, that our staff is doing. Many thanks to Kevin Irish for volunteering to beautify our campuses. Congratulations to the Pride of Temple City for doing so well in their last two competitions, well, four competitions actually, at the Luera Band Review, and then they went to the Orange County Invitational Field Show Competition, they placed again this last weekend at the Chino Invitational Parade, and the Gar High School Invitational Field Show Competition. So I imagine they and all their band parent, people were very tired by the end of the last two weekends after that much competition, but congratulations. And I hope everybody can support their points at a sale you can contact. I'm sure any band or auxiliary member would be happy to hear from you about ordering some of their, their beautiful plants. Great job, boys' water polo team, girls' golf team, they continued to do really well. Thank you to everybody who came out to Relay for Life last week. We had several, we had several people from the district who came, and it was a really beautiful day. Temple City was able to raise over $54,000 in support of the American Cancer Society. That was outstanding. Thank you to the fellow board members and Dr. Kuna and our district office people who came to support Longdon at the relay recess last week, last Wednesday. We dodged the rain for most of the morning. Jerry was out there. We got through most, there was a little bit of rain about mid-morning, but it cleared up after that, and the kids kept walking. As Melissa mentioned, the Historical Society is having a dinner on November 19th. We hope everybody can come out, and you can also, we're starting the evening, you can visit our newly renovated museum. And lastly, as the daughter, sister, and wife of veterans, I want to thank all the veterans for their service, and Temple City will be honoring our local veterans this Friday. So thank you to all those who have served, and this is one day when we can celebrate you, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Next we have Member Giorgino.
Thank you. First, I'd like to welcome Dr. Kuna. It's great to have you on board. I'm looking forward to working with you. I wanted to thank the unions too for the event tonight and the burrito, and thank you for welcoming Dr. Kuna back. And also thank you to all the staff that were involved in the community welcome last week at Temple City High School. I had a chance at that event to speak to Christine Quang, who is the trustee for PCC for us, and she has a lot of suggestions for ways she could collaborate with us, which I'm very excited about, and it was really nice. She showed up at Relay for Life too, so I think she's very serious about working with Temple City Unified School District. Let's see, I attended the Longdon Relay for Life. Thank you, Mary Sneed, for coordinating that, and also thank you for the, to the district staff, for everybody who participated in that, and the actual relay, and raised money for Relay for Life. The, I did want to mention that one of the teams, the Real Housewives of Temple City, is going to be selling jewelry at the Temple City High School boutique on December 14th through 16th. That's to raise money for Relay for Life and also to help out the high school, so if you're available, come on by and check out all the goodies they have there to sell. I attended a grad night meeting at Temple City High School. They had a rather good-sized, enthusiastic crowd that are looking forward to having grad night back on campus, so that was exciting. I also attended the Emperor Pumpkin Decorating Contest, and that was really fun to see the cute things that the children came up with, and also their costumes. They're not quite as little as the ones that Mr. Lowman saw, but they're very cute too. Congratulations to the band for their achievements, and I did want to, I, I attended the band review that they did a couple weeks ago, and I did want to mention, if you haven't had a chance to see our band perform, the Arcadia Parade is coming up on November 19th, so they'll be marching in Arcadia on Baldwin Avenue, and then after the parade later on in the day, you could go to the Historical Society Dinner and just have a really fun-filled day. I wanted to recognize the boys' water polo team who made it to the third round CIF. That's really a great achievement. And I've recognized them before, but I did want to point out, the girls' golf team, five consecutive Rio Hondo League Championships undefeated. So that is just amazing, and congratulations to them, and I hope we can recognize them at some point. And last but not least, I, I did recognize the 12 students that'll be participating in the Turning of Roses Honor Band, but I learned that we are having more students participating in the honor band than any other high school. So that's really something to brag about, and congratulations to them. And I believe we're gonna be honoring them when they're not busy practicing.
After their season's over, right? All right. And next is Member Bell.
All right, hi, good evening, everyone. I want to echo comments of my fellow board members. I want to thank all of our friends out here who put in all that time and effort to welcome Mr. Kuna back. It really does bring back memories for me, and it's, it certainly, I agree, it's a great feeling. So, and I want to thank Mr. Irish. I had, I didn't know who he was until today, but I will say that, you know, it's people like him that's inspired me to do what I try to do, to contribute in my part, and, and I think that it's part of what makes us a great community and for generations and generations down the road. And I also really want to thank Kelly Morrison for Cloverly's Dance Club. And as some of you may know, my daughter went through both schools, and there was a point in time when I actually wanted to start a hip-hop dance team there, and the problem is, I can't dance to save my life, so, and I hadn't met Ms. Morrison yet at that time, but I know her passion and her dedication goes without saying. My daughter's been a part of that Color Guard since seventh grade all the way through graduation, and, you know, I can't say enough about that spirit that embodies, again, Mr. Irish the same. And we're just so lucky to have people like this here, you know? And every time we see that, it just reminds me of that, so I, I really want to thank them for that. I did go to La Rosa's Trunk Retreat, again, maybe not as cute as the Learning, or the TCLA, but it was so, so good to see families just out, right? From after so many years, just, there was like 12 cars. That was really great. Just being able to walk around a little bit and, and see families and kids enjoying themselves. And, you know, band preview night, hey, our band's the band, that's who they, that's who they are, that's what they do, and, you know, I'm glad they're on our side, so. And Relay, such an important part of our community, and I want to thank Ms. Sneed for, or Board Members Sneed for inviting us to take part of it, and, and seeing the kids at the recesses. Again, when you see the kids, especially the elementary kids, it, it really kind of reminds you of why, why, why we're here and the things that we do, so. And ASB, they're, they can run a business right now, if they wanted to, really. They just have to apply for license, no, never mind, I didn't say that. But just amazing, just, just how far they've come, the maturity level, and, and how articulate they were. It's phenomenal. So, you know, thank to you, to staff and everybody who's helped them to get to where they are, all the way from elementary to here, so I really appreciate that. And Mr. Kuna, you know, we had a couple of good, great receptions, and again, just good times ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bell. Next is Member Smith.
Yeah, I'd like to start out by welcoming Art to the district, back to the district as well. There was a reception last week for the community, and it was a pretty good turnout, and then another one tonight from the different bargaining units, so thank you for all that. And it is a really good feeling. I mean, you can just feel it in the air, so, thank you. As has been mentioned, we had a meeting, joint meeting with ASB earlier tonight. They were so impressive. It seems like every time we meet with them, I walk away thinking, this is the best one yet, this is the best one yet, but these, these kids really have it together. I mean, it was just very, very impressive, so, very pleased to see that. I also would like to thank the district people who got involved with Relay for Life and the baskets and whatnot. The district raised $1,100 and change in five days for Relay for Life, so that was really nice. But the turnout, Richard was there, Art was there, I mean, Marie was there, there was a great turnout, and I saw Connie as well, but great turnout participation, very much appreciated and, and recognized by all the folks who have been working to put the event together, so thank you for that. Had a chance to go through the last week's Parent Square bulletins, and I thought it was very fortuitous that several of the elementary schools talked about being careful when it's raining, going slower, watch out for little kids, that kind of thing. I thought it was very timely, given the rain we had, so thank you for that. I also see that they're, they're starting their food drives to help, help out the needy and during the December timeframe, and I know Aquana's delivered actually 10 turkeys to Oak Avenue earlier today, so, and with much, many more to come, probably as many as 40 more to come. I also see that the parent-teacher conferences are starting basically this week, and then the elementary schools, I guess, gotta have them a little bit towards the end of the month, but it's nice to see too. It sure has flown by quick already. And I, oh, I didn't want to forget the Cloverly Dance Girls, that's really well done too. It's nice to see that happen, and I think Steven Etta were saying yes. That's it.
All right, thank you, Member Smith. I'll go last here, and I'll start with just, welcome Dr. Kuna. Thank you so much for joining us, and we're so excited for you to lead us in, into the future, and we know there are some great things ahead, so thank you so much. Thank you, TCE, for the, the social outside. I really appreciated it, and it, it does feel, just, it's positive energy, and, you know, that, that's great, and we want to keep that going, so let's keep, keep the, the good vibes coming. And I want to thank Mike Kidd and ASB for their presentation. It was fantastic. Looking forward to all the things they have, they can do this year, and, and because it's been less restrictive, they've been able to do a lot of the things that we missed for a long time, and so it's great to see it. I also want to recognize our veterans in honor of Veterans Day on Friday. Thank you to all our servicemen and women for their service. I also want to honor those service people we have lost in the course of defending our country. Thank you for your service. I would like to congratulate our boys' water polo team for making it to the third round. I caught the tail end of two games, and I was super proud of how hard the team played and represented Temple City High School very well. I also want to recognize Pride of Temple City. They've had some great results and have been very, very busy, and I know, just from talking to some band parents, how much goes into those competitions, and I appreciate that, that hard work, and so proud of that group. In terms of attendance, I attended the November 1st Superintendent Welcome Reception, I caught the tail end of the, that water polo game, and then on November 5th, I helped out Performing Arts with the Savers fundraiser early in the morning, then went to Relay for Life, and then caught the tail end of the CIF water polo game, and then went back to Relay for Life. So it was a busy November 5th. And because we will not be meeting until December, I want to wish our entire school community a wonderful Thanksgiving, many things to be thankful for. I hope the time is restful and spent enjoying time with family and friends, and I also want our district employees at all levels to know how grateful we are for all of their hard work and the care they put into doing their very best for all of our students every day. So have a wonderful Thanksgiving. And that's my update for today. And next we move on to Student Board Member Comments.
Board Member King, I'm trying to keep this short. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start off by welcoming Dr. Kuna to his first meeting, and also thank you to yourself and Ms. Wu for visiting Temple City High School's ASB. It was really such a delight to have both of you there, and I'm looking forward to a lot more meetings in the future, and I'm also looking forward to seeing how negotiations proceed. I don't have all the intel on that, but I'm really hoping for the best results for both the district, TCE, CSCA, and all parties involved. And then I was really delighted to listen to Cloverly and watch Cloverly's Dance Club presentation. Temple City is always known for performing arts, I mean, that's clear with band, that's clear with Color Guard, and starting these kids off early, giving them another outlet to express the energy that they have at such a young age, and also just another performing arts for them to go into. It's gonna make a huge impact. It's going to make a huge impact on these kids, it's going to keep them more involved when they get to Oak, and it's just going to be very beneficial for their schoolites in general, so I'm very happy about that, and that is it for me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Board Member King. We'll move on to Item 19, Superintendent Comments. Dr. Kuna.
Thank you. So, I had all these things I was going to say, but first, let me say thank you to all of you, Board. I would not be here if it wasn't for you, so thank you for the opportunity. The other thing is, I, you know, and a lot of people are saying, "Welcome to your first meeting," right? And it's, to me, I, it almost feels like I have never left. I, you know, each day that goes by, something else, you know, hits me like, "Oh, I remember doing that and I remember this," and I, you know, and it's, I told Richard, "I almost sat in this chair," because, and walking back, "I sat here for four years," and I cannot tell you enough how grateful I am to be back. I, I have always, I've longed for the opportunity to come back to, to this district. And, and there, there were a couple of folks outside who asked me, "Art, why, why would you come back?" And it's this, you know, I, it's the event outside, it's, it's, we've all had jobs, right? And there are things you have to do, and then there are things you get to do. And in, in Temple City, I get to be part of things, I get to do this, I, I get to go to the Relay for Life, I get to sit with an amazing ASB team, I get to go watch our boys' water polo team. Those are the things that, those are the reasons why I wanted to come back here and I, you know, could not do any of this without the support of others, so I thank the team here, Tamar, Connie, Richard, Marie, for, for their support. I've been looking forward to working with all of them. But everybody else too, you know, for the behind-the-scenes. Mari, Jennifer, Marisol, Maria, putting on the event, Cindy for putting on the event for the meet and greet, but also our, our custodians for helping out at the high school. And Art, I agree with you, there's, there's not a lot we could do without our classified folks. Both of my parents were classified employees in the school district. But I am very grateful for this opportunity and I will try not to screw it up a lot.
All right. We'll move on to Item 20. Written Communications. Any written communications? No, right? Okay. I should put these on. All right, we have no discussion information items and we'll move on to discussion-action items, the discussion-action portion of our agenda, starting with Administration, Item Number 21, Adoption of Resolution 2223-17, Resolution to Reauthorize Electronic Meetings of the Governing Board During a State of Emergency. This is something we've had routine on our agenda. Can I get a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Motion by Member Georgino, second.
I'll second.
By Member Smith, second by Member Smith. And, did you want to add anything, Dr. Kuna? No, right? Okay. So, let's go ahead and move to the vote. It is a resolution, so we will have to do a roll call vote, preferential vote from Student Board Member King.
Yes.
All right, I'm a yes. Member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Bell?
Yes.
And Member Smith?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes 5-0. We move on to Item Number 22, Received Board Policy for Second Read and Approved. This is on Board Policy 6174, Education for English Learners. Can I get a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Motion by Member Sneed?
I'll second.
Second by Member, Student Board Member King. And any conversations? This is a second read, so we've had the, the background on this one already. Did anybody have any questions, comments, or anything that you want to add before we move to the vote? All right, let's go to the vote. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We move on to Item Number 23, Authorization to Relocate Oak Intermediate School Staff Parking Lot Gate. Can I get a motion and? I'll motion. And can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Member Georgino. And Connie, did you have any background on this one?
Yes, I would like to invite the Oak Principal, Mr. Larson, and the Director of Facility, Ms. Alaa, to explain in the Board and Committee what the kind of project is, why, and how.
Awesome, thank you.
That was Dr. K, that one's not even coming up, the votes are still happening.
So, thank you, Members of the Board, Executive Cabinet.
Is your mic on? It is, okay, it's just a little.
Let's switch out. Here, let's try this one. But don't get so quick.
So, yeah, Members of the Board, Executive Cabinet, Dr. Kuna, thank you for the opportunity to present this project. So when I started in October last year, kind of got to lay the land and we realized that here is the front of our school, so this is on Oak Avenue. When I started, the normal protocol was that this gate was wide open all day. There was one of our campus supervisors who's about 50 yards down that way, kind of in the middle of the parking lot where the gate then goes into our lawn. And from the beginning, this is, as everybody in this room, safety is our number-one priority, it's my number-one priority, and it was just a concern off the bat that our campus just seemed way too open. So, you know, kind of going through, midway through the year after I kind of really got going, we, we kept this gate closed, that was kind of just, I wanted a secure, locked campus. Just everything going on in the world, we can never be too careful. So, as sometimes when you, you know, put your finger in the dam to solve one problem, another one kind of opens up. And so what the problem started happening is, anytime somebody came in the morning after we locked the gate at the beginning of school, and this is, you know, we have at least 20 or so school employees, our cafeteria workers, grounds and maintenance, employees who start, who start their day after school starts, they have to stop, hang out in the middle of the street, essentially the car is blocking half a lane of traffic, get out of their car, open the gate, drive in, get out, close the date, close the gate, and then come onto campus. Here's one example here. Again, this is, this was actually not even a staged shot, this just happened to be, employee was coming in, this Anthony was coming to visit and check it out, and you can see when they come to the gate, really blocking part of Oak Avenue, and it, it creates a potential safety concern. Any driver who's not paying attention, middle of the day trying to get to work or something, can roll right through and take out, you know, one of our employees' cars or, again, a real safety concern. So, getting with Anthony, kind of towards the end, we started conversations the end of last year to how we can fix this problem, you know, provide some, some guest parking, which currently we do not have, so any parent who says coming in for an IEP meeting or a meeting with administration, they have to find, you know, some kind of street parking that's not, you know, where they're allowed to park during the day for an extended period of time to come in. So Anthony and his team kind of came up with a great solution that we hope can remedy this problem.
Good evening, Board President Espinoza, Members of the Board and Executive Cabinet. So, like Jordan was mentioning, we were kind of discussing the lay of the land, how can we improve kind of this flow along with keeping the campus secure, because that's our number-one goal. So this is the current, what the wrought iron is kind of situated now on the site. This leaves our visitors to either park and unloading, unloading and risk running out of that time, or parking on the opposite side of the street where they have to kind of deal with street sweeping days. There's very minimal parking where it's not kind of designated for them. So, we propose to kind of kick the fence back into the parking lot after, you know, observing how the site functions, what parking we're using, what parking we're not using, and then kicking it off into the parking lot, allowing for our staff, our visitor, or mostly our staff to come in and out, park safely, you know, or stage their cars safely inside the parking lot. As you can see, there's a keypad there, so everyone will have a, a unique key number or pad number that, that'll allow them to get onto the campus, allowing the campus to remain secure. This gives us the opportunity to now create visitor parking for an extended time versus a 20-minute loading and unloading. Also, we're upgrading some of the chain-link fencing that is there now, as that's an easier fence to kind of get over versus an ornamental fence, so redoing that section of fencing to kind of keep it all uniform. Essentially, taking almost all of the risks that we have now with staff leaving their cars, you know, halfway into the street, keeping the sites secured, and then also, like I said, adding the, the visitor parking. Any questions?
That looks good, I was trying to envision how it was going to look.
So, do you have to have handicap accessible parking?
Yes, we have to have one for 20, every 25 stalls.
So then, how, if someone parks in the visitor, how do they get into the school?
So, the current situation that, I'm sorry, Jordan, where we have that fencing all the way up, right, that's blocked off, all of that will be removed. So essentially, they will park, park in the visitor and then walk down that sidewalk to the front of the gate where they would, where they would get buzzed in as, as they do now.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Other questions?
I don't, okay. Once you're into the parking lot, I can't remember if there, I know there's fencing next to the lawn.
Yes.
Is it closer to this two-story building?
Yes.
Is there actually, is there chain-link across there to block it off?
No, it stops at about the library.
So, once they get on the camp, they could actually get on the campus?
No. They'd have to go around. The only people that'll have access would be staff.
Right.
But the visitors would, would not have access to the parking lot or to the.
The way it is right now.
Oh, correct. Yeah, the way it is now, right. As soon as they get past that front gate, it's, it's wide open.
Kind of open, yeah.
And, and that's one of the concerns with having the gate open, because even though our security, and one, we only have three security guards, so having one sit at a spot, not supervising children all day is a hard resource for us to give up. But again, once, so say if that gate's open and they, they drive in, they can drive right by him and go all the way back, as far as the backfield, with no way to stop them. So this gives us a barrier where you can't get into campus and you're surrounded by the wrought iron fence, and then you still have to make your way, you know, park in visitor's spot, make your way back to the sidewalk, walk down to our front gate where then a person escorts you into campus.
Near your office.
Yeah, near the front office. So anytime they, they buzz in from that front gate and then a person, sometimes me, sometimes Jessica, our assistant principal, or an office staff member, and they physically go to the gate, get them, bring them into the office, check them in with Raptor, and, and then go on.
Any other questions? Yes, it looks good. I couldn't envision what it was going to look like, it looks great and it looks very secure.
And I just want to add, thank you to Anthony and Jordan for, for helping to come up with a solution, and Connie as well, but one of the things we're going to address, because like Jordan said, you, you address one problem and something else pops up, we need to do a better job of utilizing how our individuals, or making sure that our, our staff are utilized properly. And so, we have folks that are just sitting at gates who should be supervising students, where we have a principal who has to go out and let people in, and so we're going to, we're going to address also how people enter the campus and have it more secure so that our staff isn't having to walk back and forth. So that, that is something that will be coming too, but Connie and I will be working on that and, and funding for that, but one of our priorities is obviously safety and so we're going to do everything we can to address the needs for future safety concerns as well.
Excellent.
Actually, you know what, I do have just one question. Do you have an expected timeline as to when you think you?
Winter break.
Winter break?
Winter break, I have less staff, there's going to be quite a bit of concrete work that needs to get done for that channeling and electro, electricity, the electricity we're going to have to pull off that light. So, winter break, fall goes as planned, should be done, should be a nice little Christmas present.
Yeah, that's great.
Excellent. Looks like a great plan. Thank you for coming up with that idea.
All right, let's move to the vote. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
That's a great idea, yes.
Yes, okay. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right, looking forward to seeing it. We move on to Item Number 24, Approval to Accept 2022-23 Temple City Education Association TCA Interest Statements for Negotiations with the District. Can I get a motion and a second? Motion by Member Smith?
Second.
Second by Member Sneed. Any background on this one, Tamar?
No, I mean, for the next six items, I think they're pretty self-explanatory, they're the interest statements on, by all three of our unions as well as ours. We just look forward to a very successful negotiation session.
And this is routine, how we normally would start off negotiations with this type of information?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about this one? All right, and that follows for the rest, so I, unless there's something specific, we'll, anyway, we'll, we'll just go for the vote.
And just for clarity, and I know most everybody here knows it, but the reason why 823 would have more items listed is because it's a, a full successor agreement and everybody else is limited to the 3+. So, that's why they have them.
Got it, got it. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and move to the vote. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We move on to Item Number 25, Approval to Accept the District's 2022-23 Interest Statement for Negotiations with Temple City Education Association TCEA. May I get a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Motion by Member Georgino, I'll second. And this one is actually a little bit different than 24, right? Do you want it, like, because it's our?
Yes, this is our proposal to TCEA. So these are our items, this is our interest statement to TCEA. So the first one was TCEA's to TCUSD, this one is TCUSD to TCEA.
Any additional comments or questions about this one? All right, we will move to the vote. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item Number 26, Approval to Accept CSCEA 105-2022-23 Interest Statement for Negotiation with the District. Can I get a motion and a second?
So move.
Motion by Member Bell?
I'll second.
Second by Member Georgino. Any discussion on this one?
This is just 105's interest statement to the district.
Okay. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We move on to Item Number 27, Approval to Accept the District's 2022-23 Interest Statement for Negotiations with CSCEA 105. May I get a motion and a second? Motion by Member Smith, I'll second. And this is kind of just the routine of the others, similar, so we won't, does anyone want to say anything about that? Okay. All right, preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We move on to Item Number 28, Approval to Accept CSCEA 823-2022-23 Interest Statement for Negotiations with the District. May I get a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Motion by Member Sneed, second by Member King, Student Board Member King?
Yes.
No, I meant, I meant to say Student Board Member King. All right, this is the same as what we've just discussed, so we'll move on to the vote. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We move on to Item Number 29, Approval to Accept the District's 2022-23 Interest Statement for Negotiations with CAC, CSCEA 823. May I get a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Motion by Member Georgino, second by Student Board Member King. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. That takes us to Consent Agenda. This one is a routine item approved by one motion and one vote unless a member of the Board or audience requests that any item be reviewed and voted upon separately. Do we have anyone that wants to poll anything, ask questions about anything in consent?
I would like to poll Item A6 on Page 2 of Item Number 32.
Item Number 32. Okay, A6. What did you say, I'm sorry, A6?
On Page 2 of Item 1?
Page 2. Page 2 of Item Number 32, right?
Involved my son, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I got it, I just wanted to make sure, okay. All right, so we will vote upon Item Number 32. All right, so we will vote upon item number 32 separately, and besides item 32, can I get a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Member Jorgino, second by Member Bell. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. That takes us back to item number 32, which we'll vote upon separately. Was there a question on this, or you're abstaining?
I'm just abstaining.
Okay, got it. All right, so can I get a motion and a second to approve item 32?
I'll move.
Motion by Member Sneed, second by Member Jorgino. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye? Oh, wait, first we have to say Matt is abstaining, right?
No.
No, or what? Oh, when I go to it? Okay. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, that's four ayes. Any opposed? Any abstain?
I'm abstaining.
All right, one abstain. And the motion passes 4-0-1. All right. Then that takes us to item number 34, Board Member Comments. Any Board Member comments? Didn't we, yeah, we did, we did all of it, yes. We are on item 34. Any Board Member comments? Okay, we'll move on to item 35, Future Agenda Items. We have Dual Language Immersion Review of Governance Handbook, Mission, Vision, and Goals, and then Visual and Performing Arts Programs. Anything else that we want to add to future agenda items? It's a good, it's a good list. Okay, we'll move on to item 36, Additional Public Comment on Agendized or Non-Agendized Items. Any public comment?
I think it's 37. I think we have the older agenda.
Oh, do I have?
Yeah.
Where?
We had it.
Oh, we have 34.
We have the old.
Oh.
35.
Okay, I did pull the wrong one. Okay. So we'll go back to item 34 on the new agenda, which is...
It's part of consent.
Oh, it's part of consent?
Yeah.
So 35 is...
Oh, my numbers are off.
Yeah, yeah.
I see. Oh, okay, I thought I missed something.
It was the wrong sample.
All right, so additional public comment on agendized is number 37. All right, got it. Any public comment? Yes, please?
I have a dumb question. How does one go, I'm a parent at Cloverly School, how does one go about requesting? I read the website and it said that every parent, you know, encourages you to come and, you know, take part in this. And it says that you have to fill out a form if you want to speak for the agenda items. But how does one go about doing that?
Yeah, there's a form in the back, but if you, if you would like to speak, you can today, and just fill out the form after.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Okay.
I have a stu, I have a daughter that goes to Cloverly School. Previously, she was at La Rosa for five years, and I just want to say, Mr. Rose was such a good principal. He was awesome. He was the best. Sad that he's not there anymore. The person who took over was doing pretty good. They're, you know, pretty good. My daughter's also part of the dance club, and it's her favorite part of the week. Safety, safety is the most, biggest concern about everything. I saw the presentation. Why, I just want to bring up a, you know, a matter to you guys, that. If I go onto campus at Cloverly during the middle of the day, I can't just walk onto the campus. But after-school hours, anybody could walk onto the campus. And there's the Stars Club, and there's ELP going on at that time, which ELP's under the school district. And anybody could walk into the restrooms, anybody could walk onto the campus. Why is that, is it able to happen like that? But during the day, you can't, you know? Just a question, I guess. An issue of safety that I wanted to bring up to you guys.
We do appreciate, and just so you know, that when we don't have something agendized, we may not be able to respond to it.
No, 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 just an issue I wanted to bring to your attention.
But, yes, no, thank you so much, and I know our superintendent will make sure that, you know, they connect with you directly.
No problem, no problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Did you write that form?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? Sure.
Did you go out and form?
No, the presentation that was given about the parking right there, the gate and that, and Richard knows, every morning and every evening, a custodian has to open the gate on the Temple City side, and our vehicles are sticking out in traffic, and there is no side, you know, parking on that side. And they're coming, and when I'm closing it at night, I'm seeing cars coming, and I'm like, I'm going to have to jump over this fence if they hit me because my vehicle's sticking out. Sometimes I try to pull it onto the sidewalk, but one time, police came by and they were shining a light on me, wondering what I was doing, and I had to show them, you know, I work here. But I would love to have some consideration on maybe one of those entrances or exits, push it back to where the vehicle is not sticking out, and we can open it safely and close it safely.
This is at the high school?
Yeah, the student lot.